We'll call the November seventeenth City Council meeting to order. Commissioner Banks, you will give us the prayer pledge and the fact of the day, please, sir?
Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening and we're grateful again to live in this great city. We thank you, Father, for your hand of blessing upon us, your wisdom to direct us. We just ask you to guide this meeting tonight for the common good and for your glory. We ask it all in Jesus's name.
Amen.
Our pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the fact of the day. On November fifteenth, eighteen sixty-seven, the first stock ticker is unveiled in New York City. The advent of the ticker changed the stock market by making up-to-the-minute prices available to investors around the country. Prior to this development, information from the New York Stock Exchange, which was established in seventeen ninety-two, traveled by mail or messenger. The stock ticker was invented by Edward Callahan, who configured a telegraph machine to print stock quotes on streams of paper tape. The ticker got its name from the sound its type wheel made. The last mechanical stock ticker debuted in nineteen sixty and was eventually replaced by computerized tickers with electronic displays.
All right, Edward, any changes to the agenda?
Mayor, there are no changes at this point, but we have the presentations first.
Okay. All right, approval of the minutes. We've got some minutes in front of you. I know that Commissioner Velazquez has wanted to add some content to the October sixth meeting. I've got it in front of you. Hope you've had a chance to look at it. Sorry for the late.
I have not had a chance to look at it.
So, do you want to just table the approval of minutes? It's a little later in the agenda, so if you get a chance to look at them, or what would you like to do there?
I just want to make sure that the other commissioners have read them and are in agreeance with them.
Okay. So, we'll just table them here for a little bit. Come back.
Can I? I had two quick notes on it, real quick. Just, so if we're going to table it, let's make the changes. Is this the full minutes?
Is this what now?
Is this the full minutes from the sixth?
Yes.
The, okay, so like on page twenty-four, printed, the business around the Planning Commission appeal. Commissioners, you have eye for both sets. That was a three-two vote, so Becker and Velazquez voting nay, it should say. And then my comments during public comments. I do want the, I guess it's the third, fourth sentence now. No, fifth sentence, where it begins. He said he's receiving emails on this topic stating, I just want that to be very clear, that the words that are after that.
Page what?
Page four. So, he said he's receiving emails on this topic stating, and I want to say that the emails are stating, not that I'm stating, because it's stating that there is a very large majority, I don't think there's a very large majority, it's a majority of the people that return their proxies. But I just want that, the latter portions to reflect that I was reading at the time, an email that was submitted to me personally. Those are the only changes that I had.
Okay, so we'll come back to that in just a few minutes. Next up, we have the presentation by the Apopka Youth Council. They want to show us a video, and with us today, we have the whole team from the Apopka Youth Council, and Adriana Gonzalez, a junior at Apopka High School, is going to take over. So, Adriana, come on up.
I am Ariana Gonzalez, and I am a part of the Apopka Youth Council. Tonight, we are presenting our mental health video that we made for the Florida League of Cities Youth Council Competition. Thank you, and I hope you enjoy. Everybody should be able to share their mental health stories with open-mindedness and understanding, but sadly, we live in a society that doesn't allow that to happen. When I was twelve years old, I was diagnosed with a mild form of Tourette's, and most people don't notice my Tourette's because I've dealt with it for a long time, so I know how to suppress it. Whenever I look at my own personal story, I bring it up to some people, and they're quite ignorant to the idea, and it makes me want to bring it up less and less. Going to new places and meeting new people is always more exhausting than it should be. I think it's just because of the stress and anxiousness that comes before it, or maybe it's like the regret and self-doubt that comes after me. I usually think so much about what I'm going to say, or how I'm going to move, or how I'm going to act in any social situation, that it comes out either awkward or like I'm trying too hard, but I want to be, like, I want to look effortless. I hate that I overthink every situation afterwards and during it, and that causes me to just stress out more.
As a student, there's already a lot of pressure and responsibilities that you have as is, and then to add on being an athlete and performing at a high level, especially if you want to go into college, where that, it can put on even more stress.
If you're waking up early in the morning, you have before-school practice or even late-night practice, like you want to sleep, but you have to finish your homework or study for a test. It goes for everything in life, like your parents expect you to have good grades, especially for student athletes, like that's not easy.
You have practices at all different hours, and then trying to maintain the best grades that you're capable of, and the two schedules conflict a lot, and sleep is like a major
I feel like a lot of people don't talk about this because it's something very personal. I don't like talking about it because I don't like people thinking that I depend on them emotionally. Like, sometimes I just feel like really sad if it stops me from doing, like, the smallest things I can do, like sometimes schoolwork. Sometimes I feel like I'm not, my trauma isn't as important as someone else's because I don't come from, like, a nice family. I don't know, I feel like that also, like, stops a lot of people from, like, speaking up about it.
What is something we can do or peers can do to find a solution?
Any mindfulness practice is key to getting out of your head because the whole topic that we're talking about is mental health. So, if you can become more aware of what is going on in your mind, that will really help you to overcome any sorts of negative thoughts.
Definitely starting within the family will help. I think that will cause the most change because you're around your parents a lot, so how your parents are going to be talking about mental health, you, or even talking about their own mental health, that will help a lot.
I feel like telling people that it's okay to have therapy and not have it looked down upon because it's useful and it helps people.
So, what do you think that our local government can do, as well as the Apopka City community, to help us?
Local government in general can create more affordable therapy so that people are more open to the idea of getting help.
I think that the mental health days are a great start, but if you want to have more of an impact, then you need to incorporate it into the way that you run your schools.
we met with you all today, we do hope to expand on this. They have expressed an interest in holding a mental health day, almost like a mental
Wow, very well done. That's awesome. Ariana, you want to come up and just kind of tell us how you got to the, this was
health fair, where we have local therapists, and we invite members of the public and their teachers and their principals, and of course, we want to make sure that we engage the youth
your, the topic that you picked?
and just make it a safe place for people to come and to talk, and maybe even like a town So, even watching the video back, it just, it does something to me. hall-type atmosphere where they're just able to express their feelings and express what they're going through. It's always amazing to me, you know, I'm a former teacher, just the things that they So, it was crazy because when I was interviewing the youth, I told them, I said, you know, are still, that they have to deal with at school. as soon as we start, we actually have to start working on this video competition for They blew my mind when they were telling me about the TikTok challenge, and them having the Florida League of Cities. And part of their interview was the question that I posed for them, and it was the question that they addressed, so the most critical youth issue that they feel like is affecting them right now, and for them to say mental health was just like, I was blown away. people going into the restrooms and stealing toilet paper, so they're unable to even go I couldn't believe that, you know, I couldn't believe that they would even say that. to the restroom while they're at school because people are stealing the toilet paper and So, from there, we were able to contact Ms. Janet, and she was able to help us put the the paper towels, and that's like, that was like a thing for a while, and so we did a little check-in today. video together, and I'm just so proud of them. I'm like, how's the bathroom situation? Can you use the bathroom at school?
Awesome.
Has it improved? But it's just things like that, and you know, we just, we never know what people are going through, so I'm just, I'm just so proud of them.
Thank you. I just want to add on to that, you know, I think the isolation that we've gone through because of COVID has been a big part of that, and you guys are hitting it there, to go from isolation to interaction, talking, being able to share that with somebody, you know, your family, your friends, your church, your school, and it's just getting out of those boxes, you know, because that's when your brain starts going on, you know, the feedback loop, and, you know, so thank you for doing that, and very great job. I love your camera shot, by the way. Who did that? I guess, you know, nice fade in the background, looked real professional, so great job.
So, I just want to say thank you because it is something that I personally have dealt with for the last two years, dealing with my own two grandchildren who are fourteen and fifteen, and I can tell you that it was a challenge, it was difficult, and the way that I stayed in touch with them was literally, sometimes some things are good in our modern world, and FaceTime actually helped me through that with them, because I would spend time with them at FaceTime, I would give their mom a break because their mom is a single mom, and so she had to work, and I would go and pick them up. It's a four-hour drive to pick them up, bring them home, and spend that time with them, and so it was, you know, interacting, and it was almost like homeschooling, and I realized the isolation really disconnected them, and they're just starting to get back to it. So, the fact that you even are expressing this just makes me realize how hard it's been for all the youth, so thank you for sharing.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
No need to be sorry. It's my hope that you will follow through with the town hall to bring this to an awareness, because a lot of times, people put a stigma on you when you're doing therapy, and so a lot of young people and adults as well refuse to go to therapy because of the stigmas attached. People start looking at them funny, start treating them funny, so want to make sure that you follow through with that, and especially that a lot of parents have transitioned during this COVID, and a lot of kids have been left alone, either to other siblings or to grandparents or uncles and aunts, and so that's also a mental thing that they've got to go through to deal with death at such a young age, so please follow through on your idea.
Yeah, I agree. The video is beautifully done, you know, and mental health kind of manifests itself differently in many different ways, and I think that video highlights that, and the challenges, and I appreciate the word pressure that was used in that video, because the pressures, again, manifest themselves differently. Each generation is faced with different sets of pressures. Commissioner Banksen touched on it, you know, we're in the midst of coming out of this pandemic, that isolation aspect was a pressure, and then what's been happening over the last, call it ten years, in social media. Dr. Jackson talked about it in terms of TikTok, but you know, there's X amount of social media platforms that are out there that give negative pressures to people that aren't strong-minded or strong-willed, have that internal fortitude to fight against those pressures. You, the Youth Council, have your built-in network of the people sitting right next to you, right? So, be that external pressure for other people, be that kind of guiding light for the people that are struggling with those pressures negatively, but then it's not just your group, it's the people sitting in these chambers right now. I'm sure everybody, every adult in here would lend their time and talents to help you out and anybody that you feel is needing that kind of shoulder they cry on or lending hands. So, we've got a great community, you've got a great group, great mentors, and wonderful product, so congratulations.
Yes, so we hope you guys bring home the gold on this. So, thank you all for coming out tonight.
Thank you.
Next up, we have a presentation on the Billy Dean Community Garden Improvements, presented by Sue Leverance. Pretty exciting what they've done to make some vast improvements. We're excited, Big Potatoes Foundation and what they're doing to help us out.
I've been with the Billy Dean Community Garden since about twenty fifteen. The garden was started after-
Can you drop that, drop the mic down a little bit? There you go, thank you.
So, the garden was started about fifteen years ago. Commissioner Dean helped facilitate its creation, and we love the garden. The garden has been just a sanctuary during COVID. Being able to escape out there has been, for us, a very big mental health boost, to say the least. So, during that time, we did begin some improvements to it based upon the idea that the community garden offers opportunities for education, and I love the fact that so many people are so interested, and so many people will say, "I've always really wanted to garden," or "I grew a tomato plant once," or "I grew flowers," and, you know, they can do more than that. So, we've set out to kind of create not only a little bit better circumstances for the gardeners that are there, but also to inspire people from the community to do things that maybe they wouldn't have. So, I'm going to begin the presentation. Let's see, go ahead and do this. So, the garden is about an acre at the corner of Park Avenue, Ninth Street. In case anyone hasn't seen it, go ahead and drive by, it's a fenced area, and you can see the red barn shed on there. The land is owned by the City of Apopka, and we are very grateful. It's managed and operated by the good people at the Big Potato Foundation. This is a nonprofit foundation, and we offer, for twenty-five dollars a year per bed, they're four-foot by sixteen-foot, very large raised beds, and a few volunteer hours keeps the cost down, so the gardeners have access to everything that they need, including some seeds. We have a woman from Baker Creek Heirloom Seeds there, that she's always bringing in seeds, and we save seeds and we donate seeds, and people can go into our greenhouse that we created and, you know, get their own. So, in addition to growing food for themselves, the gardeners have donated hundreds of pounds over the last few years to local food banks, mostly loaves and fishes. Sometimes they'll grow an entire bed for produce, strictly for donations. A few seeds from around the garden. In the, in this, this is our start of our education garden here. Here's the greenhouse. It was a kind of a used structure, and four of us kind of beat it back together after it was transported to the property, and it's holding so far. Some more beds of the education garden, and there's another view of the greenhouse. These are some of the fruits of the garden I personally have been involved in. We're very excited about our first bananas out there right now, and this is my peanut harvest this year. It was much better than I expected, and we grew some big melons out there and, you know, some other things, so it was a good year. These are some of the food bank donations, typical things that we give would, might be cabbages, carrots, okra, some are gua sha zucchini, mustard greens, collard greens. These over here are turnips and turnip greens that I cut and put in bags. So, the Billy Dean Community Garden recently received a forty-seven thousand dollar grant. This is a correction on the name. It was the Orlando Regional Realtor Foundation, very generous, and Candy Cole, who is in our audience, has been very, very helpful in getting us the funding. Utilizing a large part of this grant, we have OX Construction. They were retained to provide several items for the garden, including a new pavilion, which I'll show you, a tool shed, wooden trellises, a parking and gardening area for the disabled, as well as installing more irrigation, doing some site grading and debris disposal. This group is impressive. It's led by David Francois. OX Construction employs students of his OX School of Construction, which is a nonprofit organization created to actively train our youths and military veterans hands-on construction trades. They have an intensive twenty-four-week program, and their goal is helping students develop their own business in the construction industry without investing a lot of money. So, they are gearing up to start their portion of it. The rest of the grant will be used to purchase a number of things, tools, materials to rebuild seventy of the beds. Bed building is going to be a big volunteer effort. If anyone wants to come out to the garden, we're going to have workdays, and, you know, I'll show you some of the existing beds, and you'll see why we need to rebuild them. We're also seeking other grants and donations in order to continue to grow and to offer educational services to the community, and we're very, very excited about the future. In building what we're building, we're really going to be able to create a lot of opportunities. So, we have two goals, two main overarching goals, serving the Billy Dean Community Gardeners and serving the broader community. So, as I was mentioning, we have a plan to rebuild seventy of the beds, add water-saving drip irrigation for every bed, because sometimes right now, people have to use hoses to water, and we can put those irrigation, drip irrigation on timers, so they automatically go off at dawn and water the beds. Our second tool storage shed is going to be very useful because the one we've got is getting pretty crowded with tools. We need to be able to purchase some better soil. Soil over time kind of gets old and needs enriching, and when we make new beds, you know, we need soil, so we're going to be doing that, adding the disabled gardener beds, and we have some plans for some pollinator beds to attract more bees and butterflies, and that'll help to improve crop yields. Plus, they're great to look at. And our future plans is adding a fenced area with honeybee hives, and we're going to make it so that can be an educational opportunity, and observers will have a window they can safely observe them from, so I'm excited about that. Possibly a hoop house to have a great place to start seeds. We are adding some refrigerated storage for food bank donations of vegetables. We want to get a sewer line in place and build a restroom facility someday. We have a state-of-the-art quick compost system. O-Town Compost has shown us an example of that, and that generates, very rapidly generates fertile soil. The pollinator beds I mentioned, those will be metal troughs, kind of a nod to our agricultural heritage, and one of the things discussed, just in its infancy, maybe obtaining a patch of land to create a food forest in order to give people in the surrounding area access to free, healthy food, because we're kind of in a food desert over there, and many other exciting ideas. So, in order to serve the community, one of the things that we are creating is an open-air pavilion. It'll be a covered place for meetings and classes for the community. We'll be able to stage harvest there. It'll be donated to the local food banks, and there'll be a lockable component to store secured items. Right now, we were talking about putting the bed-building materials there because it's going to take a while to get them all built. We want to attract speakers and events that serve the community, and we're already starting to do that. We want to complete our education demonstration garden that was begun in twenty twenty and create an attractive entrance to it, which will be a pergola, and as well as adding the permaculture beds at the perimeter. We've got plans for some brightly colored benches and picnic tables. We will be adding electric power generously provided by the City of Apopka. We're going to add a beautiful water feature, which will be hand-created to enhance the experience for visitors and help to train the next generation of gardeners. So, I'll show you some things that are going on. These are just, those are the colors of, and it's not as bright, it doesn't, this doesn't read as brightly as it actually is, but these are the colors that'll be used for the picnic tables and benches. Here's our pavilion. It's got the covered storage, the covered area, and then some outdoor picnic table area, the fenced-in beehive, the accessible garden beds, two raised beds here. We'll be putting in some composting bins, which we really, really need, and here's our entry trellis to the education garden component, and we'll probably have vining plants growing on that. So, here's what the beds look like right now, some of them, and this is what they'll look like when we're done. So, we've had some bed-building parties, so to speak, and we've had the Apopka Youth Council, we've had local garden volunteers- We've got plans for some brightly colored benches and picnic tables. We will be adding electric power generously provided by the City of Apopka. We're going to add a beautiful water feature, which will be hand-created to enhance the experience for visitors and help to train the next generation of gardeners. So I'll show you some things that are going on. These are just, those are the colors of, and it's not as bright, it doesn't, this doesn't read as brightly as it actually is, but these are the colors that'll be used for the picnic tables and benches. Here's our, our pavilion. It's got the covered storage, the covered area, and then some outdoor picnic table area. The fenced-in beehive, the accessible garden beds, two raised beds here. We'll be putting in some composting bins, which we really, really need. And here's our entry trellis to the education garden component. And we'll probably have vining plants growing on that. So here's, here's what the beds look like right now, some of them. And this is what they'll look like when we're done. So we've had some bed building parties, so to speak, and we've had the Apopka Youth Council. We've had local garden volunteers, people that, that have the beds and we had some help from For Roots. So here is the plan of the existing garden. All these beds are here and let's see, the, the shed's been there a while. Here's the greenhouse that we built and here are the six education beds right here. This is our compost area where we dump wood chips and compost in piles that people, wheelbarrow them over to their beds and fill them. And then these are an experiment that my husband and I did. These are three, they're banana circles. We've got a banana circle, a papaya circle, another banana circle, and we've got a hugelkultur berm here. And it's amazing the, the melons and squashes that grow in this and the bananas are producing gorgeous bananas and we've got a bunch of papayas. So it really is kind of cool how that's been working. We throw the debris in the, in the circles and the plants eat it. So this is our plan for the future. So here's the part that we had. And these are the permaculture with fruit trees and the trellis. And here's our pavilion, second tool shed, second tool shed, another berm and our bees and our compost there. We have a plan for the raised metal beds at the perimeter. It'll attract pollinators and here's our accessible gardening area. So currently, garden beds, current activity, education area, future activity, education area. So we do really have plans to get a lot done there. And then just to zoom in on it. And the education component out of this, out of this activity area, this is currently the education component and all this will be the education area when we're done. So we're very, very excited about, about what's happening and tell your friends, rent a garden bed. It's really therapeutic.
Well, thank you, Sue. We appreciate your presentation. Any questions or, for Sue?
Are all the beds already taken or do you have open beds?
There's some open beds.
Oh, okay. Because that's a good way of marketing and encouraging some of our residents to come and buy a bed and be, then become a volunteer.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
I was just wondering if you brought samples.
I thought of it. I should have.
Yeah, that banana tree is amazing.
Oh, yeah, thanks. Yeah, we're excited about that. And our pumpkins, we've got some, they're the big flat kind that you could, that are edible. And those are, you know, the people stack them up, you know, you see those stacks. We've got a bunch of those growing there too.
How do you feed the fruits and the vegetables? How, how do they get fed?
There are a couple of ways. We'll get a, we'll get truckloads of compost, which are based on sometimes like from the mushroom industry. They have really rich compost, they use it for the mushrooms and then they discard it. So we'll get some of that. We've had city compost before and sometimes we'll get manure. So different kinds of plant foods. And we'll take maybe a wheelbarrow load or two for each of these beds and dump it on there, mix it in, you know, every season or so, you know? Or it could even be once a year. And it really, really makes the plants grow well. We also have, so we do everything organically. There's no, there's no pesticides, no chemicals, no chemical fertilizers. It's all natural. We do have some organic fertilizer that's been donated by our Baker Creek person, Shannon McCabe, and it's, it's like rocket fuel for tomatoes. I love this stuff. It's all organic. And then with these banana circles, they just literally, you, you just, you take weeds and rotten fruit and just leftovers from vegetables and you just throw them in these holes, which are three feet deep. And you can heap them up and, and they just, they just kind of melt and the, and the plants just eat it up and they grow and they produce. It's incredible. So I did that as an experiment because I was impressed by some things I read and it's really working out well. So I'm very excited about that.
How do you keep the pesky critters away from your harvest?
You don't really, you know? There's enough, we share.
Okay.
Commissioner Smith?
Well, as one of the originals with the Billy Dean Garden along with Commissioner Dean and Peter Jordan, who's one of my former students, and Mr. John Clorin, I'm just proud to see the garden still existed and thriving and we just ask the community to get behind it and let's make it happen. There are other community gardens in other cities that have gone by the wayside, but the one here in Apopka still exists. So keep doing, we're proud of all the work on the Big Potato.
Thank you.
Not much to add. I mean, so much potential there. I'm great to see that you have a vision and goals and you're marching towards those. The only question I had, what's a food forest? I'm not familiar with the term.
A food forest is, so you think permaculture. What it is, is a, a permaculture is something that you kind of plant once and it grows and you don't replant it every season like a fruit tree. With a food forest, you would have that kind of plant and you would also have some that you would also plant. So for example, you have a tangerine tree and some mulberries and, you know, some other things that'll, that'll, you know, just grow and we give them some fertilizer and water and that kind of thing. But we'd also have in the same area, maybe several collard plants. And you can just literally break off the leaves and just walk home with them, you know, with that kind of thing. And, you know, the kind of food that, that grows well in the area, you know, that people can just, just come and harvest. And it's just, we, we don't have any solid plans for it, but, you know, the ideas come up and, you know, I, I'm very intrigued by it. It'd be a lot of fun, you know, to have something like that.
Very cool. Thank you.
Well, thanks for the Big Potato Foundation and what y'all doing to make this happen. It's, couldn't have done it without you. So thanks for your continued support.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks to the City of Apopka for your support.
Absolutely. Next up, we have the, Bobby, I guess you're going to introduce.
Good evening. Earlier this year, the city contracted with the East Central Florida Regional Planning Council to rewrite the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan is the policy document which guides growth and future growth within the city. We've contracted, as I said, with the East Central Florida Regional Planning Council. Michelle Morrison is here tonight with the East Central Florida Regional Planning Council, who's going to go over the comprehensive plan update.
Thank you, Michelle. Thanks for coming.
You're welcome. So I'm Michelle Morrison with the East Central Florida Regional Planning Council. I'm a planner. We have about 15 employees and almost a dozen of us are planners. We, we work with municipalities, providing technical assistance throughout eight counties in our region, about 72 municipalities. And this is one of the projects that we're working on. It's, it's a rather large project. So as Bobby mentioned, the comprehensive plan, it is something that is in the Florida statutes that a municipality should have. It's a blueprint for what-
You're going to need to try to speak into that mic.
Can you hear me better now? Okay, sorry about that. It's a blueprint for what a community aims to achieve in the future and it does direct economic development, transportation, land use, housing, all sorts of decisions for the next 20 years. So it's a long-range plan, a visionary document. I will say that the current Apopka Plan, Comprehensive Plan, has 550 pages and one of the things we're looking at doing is streamlining it, but make sure it aligns with your new land development code that came about, I think roughly in 2019. So we're also making sure that it not only complies with the statutes, but also has a bit of an appeal and also easier to read. We're looking at the format of it as well as the information that's in it. So required by the Florida statutes are nine elements. You can see them up there. Your current plan does have nine elements, but it's changed over time. The school element has been dropped and there's a new property rights element, which I'm, I think you're familiar with. Optional elements are the economic element and resilience and sustainability. And that resilience and sustainability is something that's a little more innovative and coming about in a lot of newer comprehensive plans. We think about resilience, the ability to recover, adapt, thrive with some kinds of stresses like acute stress, something like the pandemic or a hurricane, or chronic stress like homelessness or unemployment. So resilience element will look at making the community more resilient with some actions and strategies for people prosperity and place. I also highlight here that we're looking at putting health and equity throughout the comprehensive plan and it will be within all of the elements. And when I talk about health, not only physical health, but also we heard earlier tonight about mental health, that would also be included. The process is two tasks and each of these tasks are broken down into smaller tasks. We have already finished the first one, which ended at the end of September. And that was a pretty extensive look and audit of every single goal, objective, policy in all of the elements, as well as all the data, the maps, the tables, the figures. We also provided some templates for potential, potentially the way the plan would look, not only the data, but the way, the way it's laid out, the way it's presented, and even some imaging. The second task is what we're working on right now and the goals, objectives, and policies will go through four revisions. We're looking at version one right now, the goals, objectives, and policies. And then we're going to follow that up with data and analysis, do another round of that after city review, and then we get into the full draft. And this is just a kind of a picture of how it would look. The, the window pane is really a spreadsheet. So right now, we have a lot of spreadsheets with hundreds of policies and data on them and it's a great way to just keep all, everything organized and then also have a, a pretty visual representation of what's in the plan currently. The spreadsheets that we're looking at can also be used to track changes as, as we go through the different versions. And then once the comprehensive plan is finalized, you can keep those spreadsheets and then keep, keep using them for future versions. So you can't really see what's up there and you don't really need to read all the words that are up there, but this is something that would be for each element in the comprehensive plan, would have the goals, objectives, and policies. There are even some colors there to highlight things like green, we're going to keep this one, or yellow, we're going to change a few words on it. And the same thing is done for the data audits. So so far, we've looked at over 700 goals, objectives, policies, tables, figures, and And we've presented all that information in spreadsheets and then we're going to go ahead and work on version one following this. So what's next? What's next is version one and that will start, or will, will deliver that right after Thanksgiving. Version one, goals, objectives, and policies. And then a couple of months after that, we'll be delivering the data and analysis and that's the relevant data that backs up the goals, objectives, and policies. We're also looking for city staff review and feedback on that in order to carry forward to version two. Meanwhile, we're looking at the format and the style, also images and something, some, something that you could probably help us with, with the images would be any of your community organizations that may have pictures that relate to something in the comprehensive plan, such as housing or conservation, parks and rec. And then finally, in version three, which is the draft with text, that will be coming available probably around the June timeframe and that will be the first full writing of the comprehensive plan for review. And then following that, we'll do another revision and you'll have the final draft. And that's all I have on the update. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Michelle?
Yeah, just in preparation for this activity, I mean, there's no understating the importance of something like this, right? Because if our, if our land development code is kind of our bill of rights, the comprehensive plan is the constitution, right? And so I noticed on your, on your table that you had there, 160 of those policies center directly around future land use. So, which is going to be very critical for the future of the city, considering that we're in a high, high-growth, high-development kind of period of this city. What, how material are these changes intended to be? Are these going to be pretty material or is it going to depend on which policy we're talking about? Kind of take us through how you're going about this, because it's a pretty big work effort.
Every single policy, we're looking to see, is it required by the most recent statute? So sometimes there might be an addition, sometimes an entire element, like the property rights element. And so we're looking to see, is it required and has it been utilized in the current policy? And is it even relevant anymore when you compare it with the current land development code?
So my, so to use, to use that, so you're basically statutorily reconciling our comprehensive plan to current Florida state statutes versus are we taking any kind of discretionary changes from a city perspective during this? Or is it just more of a binary, hey, is this statutorily still relevant or not and then making those appropriate changes?
I would say both.
Both, okay.
Yeah.
And then you're getting most of that discretionary feedback from staff level solely? Or is there going to be any kind of communication with this council to kind of give our feedback on? Because what I, what I fear is that we're going to get very far down the path here, make some pretty material changes to our comp plan and it's incongruent with what maybe this council might be comfortable with. So how do we, how, how do we approach that? I mean, are we only going, as a council, are we only going to see that, all the milestones that are in the presentation?
I don't believe so. I think all the way through version two, it will be the regional planning council and the planning staff. I'm not sure if you'll be involved as early as version two, but version three is the full write with the text. So we're taking everything in the spreadsheets and then adding words that go with it, descriptions, and then the tables and the pictures. So I certainly think you would be involved in that. There's no way we can get to the final draft if you haven't seen the first draft.
Okay, fair enough. I mean, I guess it would be kind of the same process as our land development code process. Okay. Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, I heard you refer several times to state statutes. There's also going to be some room for local home rule, rule as well?
Yes, yes.
All right.
I guess the thing that really rings the bell for me is hearing the economic development side because we know that's something that's just such a driver for the things that people are wanting to see come to the city and just making sure that, you know, we have such a population growth, but we need those jobs so that people stay here, live here, work here, and eat here. And that's been that real challenge, you know, as we've sought after different restaurants to come. That's a, that's a big thing ever since I've been involved. And so we're seeing it move that direction and I think we're cresting that hill so we'll begin to see that happen. I just want to make sure that that is included in our plans, that we, you know, again with our zoning and our, our future plans, that we make sure that we have that, that, that element that, that undergirds that development.
Yeah, certainly. Thank you for reiterating that too. So I'll bring that back to the gentleman who is our economic development program manager. He's working on the, the economic element and also Ken here is, and we're all listening to that.
And I think, I know with the, the chamber has been really involved in the last few years, putting the framework together. I feel like we've got the tools now to really begin to move forward, so I'm real excited about that and thankful that we're working together as a community.
I think everyone's kind of asked the questions. At what stage will we have some input or, you know, that we will at least see it before it becomes a final comprehensive plan?
I would say version three, but I, you could probably look at it at any time you want. I would say version three, but I, you could probably look at it at any time you wanted, but it would make most sense to, to not just read in a spreadsheet, but to read it, the goals, objectives, policies, and see the data that's relevant to making those, and the, the verbiage that goes with that.
So as, as you go along with the versions, will you be coming back to give us at least some update each time a level of this is completed or worked on?
I believe so, yeah. And I think, I think that will be probably March timeframe. One thing we've heard with the census, and I know with the, with the pandemic, things have been delayed. Just heard last week that our data that we expected in December is now not going to be released till March of 2022. And that's based on 2020 census data. Otherwise, we're getting data that's estimated and projected based on 2010 census data, so things might be shifted a month or two.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate that. All right, you're welcome.
All right. Next up, another presentation by the East Central Florida Regional Planning Council, Daphne Green. Yeah, while she's coming up, just to, I got the, the pleasure to serve on that board for, I want to say, four years. A lot of great work comes out of that agency, and so we appreciate what the East Central Florida Regional Planning Council does for not, you know, not only Apopka, but I guess it's, is it three counties or now, or do they think they've moved it up to five counties? I know it's Orange, Seminole, and, and Osceola, but they added, didn't they add Lake, I think, to the, Lake has been added?
Our jurisdiction is comprised of eight counties.
Eight counties, okay.
Yes, sir. I actually have a nice little visual up on it, and we'll, we'll get right to that.
Thank you.
But yes, Luis Neves Ruiz, I'm sorry, Luis Neves Ruiz, he's actually not here today, I'm not him. My name is Daphne Green. I think the agenda does have him down, but they brought me.
You're going to need to speak into the mic here.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I can hear me perfectly. But yes, I think the agenda lists Luis as being here, but I'm actually here today to speak with you about the Brownfield program and the Brownfield Coalition, to which your city is a member. So I am Daphne Green. I'm a planner with the East Central Florida Regional Planning Council. I'm following our colleague, Michelle. And with me here today to present, or help me presenting, is our consultant from PPM, Mr. Charles Roy, and our intern, Ken Story. So I'm going to jump into it. So yes, we are with the East Central Florida Regional Planning Council. A little background on us, we are one of 10 RPCs in the state of Florida, and we do mainly focus on providing technical assistance services to our partnering cities and county members and organizations within the eight county region. We were founded in 1962, and of our partnering cities, we have the state of Apopka, and in the past, we've had the pleasure of providing these technical assistance projects. From the Regional Resilience Coalition, which we call the R2C, they've done a greenhouse gas inventory, and that work is focused on resilience and air quality and so forth. And we've also had Michelle Morrison speak on the Apopka Conference of Plan update that we're currently working on. So within the RPC, we have the Economic Development Program. Within it, it's a number of areas of expertise that we focus on, one being the strategic planning and grants area. This has been a pretty successful program, bringing in over 12 million over the last 10 years, and also making sure it's been a, been providing a return of investment of over 259%, essentially meaning for every $2 spent by the program, 250 goes back into our communities. We've also been working on health and regional food systems planning, economic impact analysis, and we're wanting to branch out into community redevelopment and revitalization through our Brownfield program. So the program is focusing in on OBT, the Orange Blossom Trail, U.S. 441 corridor. It's funded by the Federal Brownfields Program, led by the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, and its main focus is to address redevelopment or reuse of brownfield properties that may or may not be affected by contamination. The title of Brownfield really just opens it up for potential funding to help revitalize it, but it's usually more of a perceived presence of contamination due to the appearance of the property. Some examples are gas stations, medical facilities, old factories, old auto repair shops, and so forth. So more about the, the program, there are a number of benefits that can come out of this program. I have a short list here today, but I'll tell you, I did a health impact assessment on a Brownfield program in my previous job, and it was more health-focused, and we were able to understand the different health benefits, health equity and racial equity benefits tied to it, because it's such environmentally, environmental justice-focused work. So I can go on about it, but right now, I'm just focusing on the fact that it helps to revitalize parcels that otherwise would not be revitalized due to the fact that there have some financial constraints or legal constraints related to the property and its past uses. It works as a catalyst for neighborhood-wide improvements by allowing this funding to go into these properties and opening up new funding sources to them as well. It also helps to protect our natural and environmental resources that may be at risk to contamination from the sites. So it helps to protect them, reduce blight, and also take development pressures off of greenhouse, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, off of green spaces, because it creates a new infill redevelopment source. So the Brownfield Assessment Grant Award that we've been awarded by EPA, it's going to be focused in on our coalition cities. That does include the city of Apopka, the cities of Eustis, Kissimmee, and Longwood. We've been awarded a funding amount of $600,000. That's going to be focused in over the next three-year period. We had our kickoff meeting in early, I mean, in late October, and we're working hard to ensure that the majority of these funds do go directly back into our communities, at least 86%. And so we have began doing some work prior to the, the grant, the kickoff meeting. Previously, we had done some GIS analysis to identify some preliminary Brownfield sites along the OBT corridor, and found that we had seen at least 120 properties showing the, the great need for redevelopment along the corridor. But from that analysis, we were to hone in on five high-priority sites, and two of which are located in Apopka. So where we've been with the program so far this year to where we are now, there's a little timeline for you. We started off in May, when EPA announced the grant award. In the summer months, we were working hard by beginning to inform our coalition members and develop a work, work program that would be a framework for the Brownfield program, and also developed our consultant, RFQ, and have onboarded our, our consultant, PPM, in that timeframe. And we've also been working hard to develop a number of community involvement and media materials that we will hope to bring awareness of about the program and get the word out to those community stakeholders, property owners, developers, business owners, who we really want to, to be aware of this tool we're trying to use to spark economic development and so forth. We've also had our kickoff meeting, like I said, late October. We've drafted the interlocal agreement, and we've been working hard on our phase one assessments as well. It's an assessment grant, so we're making sure to, to start on that and get the community services back to our communities. Current tests also include working on that community involvement plan. We understand and appreciate the role that our community has to, our, our coalition communities have to play in this work. So the community involvement plan will help to enforce that. We're also developing a Brownfields Advisory Committee. This committee is a requirement of the grant, and it's going to be another tool that we use to bring in those community stakeholders that should be involved in this process. And we're also working, again, hard on our, on conducting our phase one and two assessments, and right now, presenting the interlocal agreement to our coalition cities. And so I've come here to essentially provide this proposed action and to also reaffirm to you all that we're making sure that this program is not going to be in any additional cost or an additional burden or workload for your staff. We really want this to be a new tool, to be a benefit of our coalition cities. So we're, we're willing to involve you all and, and propose the action of you approving the interlocal agreement, so we can continue with this work. And that's essentially my presentation for you all today. If you have any comments or questions, I'm happy to take them, and I have my contact information here as well.
Any, any questions for Daphne?
No, no. I just, I remember being involved in a Brownfield in, in our community, and if I'm not mistaken, that's where Walmart, the Sam's Club was built, was from a Brownfield. And so I remember going to all the community meetings and seeing the process, and, and it took a while, but look what it gave us, Sam's Club.
It's a great tool at increasing jobs and increasing businesses, and also giving communities what they need. It's a good, a way to bring in community benefits. If they see a need for food, we can bring in food businesses. If you need just more jobs, it can help to create more businesses and mixed-use development.
Yeah. I'm just wondering, on the funds, are they divided equally among the municipalities, or is this more just the grants as they're applied based upon the, dispersed by the project? So first to the trough gets to eat?
Essentially, I, I think that, that may, it may be kind of a mix, but I think it is dependent upon the, the sites that are presented, and how we can get our, our consultants to conduct those, those site assessments.
So we need to do our part to?
To direct us towards those properties.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I heard you say that this program wasn't costing anything, so that means that these grants does not require matching funds?
Hmm, no, it does not.
No?
No, sir.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Becker?
Yeah, I mean, our downtown overlay is a good portion of already designated as Brownfield area, correct? And so the areas that you were pointing out before, those would be new, potentially, if you want to call it, for lack of a better term, annexed locations for Brownfield designation?
I believe the proposed sites we are looking at are already in Brownfield areas.
Are they?
They're already within the Brownfield area. So if it was outside, then yes, we would have to go through that resolution process, I believe.
Yeah, because the only, the only new one that we've done recently was down off Keene and Akoi Apopka, right? So really, I mean, to, the point being is that businesses have to apply for those, and then apply for those kind of phase one studies and the incentives that go along with Brownfield programs, right?
Essentially, yes, we want to get the word out to them and then have them come into the, become involved with it, and then, yes, we can, we can provide that.
And there's obviously varying levels of incentive based off of what type of business is intended to be on that property, whether it be residential establishments or retail establishments and so forth.
That's possible, yes.
Great, thank you, appreciate you coming.
Absolutely, and I want to also thank you, Mayor Nelson, for your time on our council board.
It was good, yeah, learned a lot there, so thanks for what y'all do for us.
Thank you all.
Awesome, okay. All right, next up, public comment period. Well, that's okay, they, we'll put them on the public comment, yes.
Hello, I am Cheryl Manche with Remnant Christian Center, representing the Apopka Resource Center, also known as the Next Step Foundation nonprofit. I'd like to take a moment, we have a lot of supporters here. I'd like to start with the pastors that are here in support of the ARC. Would you please stand? Okay, thank you. Remain standing, remain standing. Okay, remain standing, and those that, go ahead, you can stand up. And those that are from churches supporting the ARC, would you please stand? Thank you, and remain standing, and those that are here with nonprofits supporting the ARC, would you please stand? Thank you. Thank you all for coming out tonight. Okay, so the last time we were here, we were asking for $150,000 from the electric company overage to buy the building on Central Avenue, I can't get the exact address, which is at 932, 936 Central Avenue. That's a great price, that building is worth a whole lot more money, there's been a lot of renovation done on it. But before we get into that, you asked for us to present a proposal, so you can get an eyes on what we're actually proposing, which made total sense. So we did get this together in May, but due to delays, this was the first chance we got to come to council to explain it. So I'm going to go over it briefly, because most of you have not seen this yet. So if you go to the executive summary, you'll see there's just a, a small portion of community partners that we're already working with, including Advent Health, Orlando Health, Next Step, United Against Poverty, Habitat for Humanity, Second Harvest, Big Potato, who is here tonight, they're going to be helping us, and several others, including the Police Of course, you can see our vision and our mission statement, we're trying to break the chains of poverty. And how this is going to work is, the, the initiative is premised on the notion that financial support alone is insufficient to solve the problem of poverty. We've been trying for 50 years to do it a certain way, and it's not working. So we have to be intentional and have collective efforts across a diverse set of organizations so we can empower households to self-sufficiency. I'm not going to read every one of these lines, I'm going to hit the main points of this. What we're asking for is for the, the, the community leaders, the area stakeholders, the churches, the nonprofits, all the support organizations that assist low and moderate income individuals and families to join the ARC, because they're the eyes and ears of their community, and they're aware of their residents' needs. And the, the ARC is, okay, I'm just going to throw this out there, it is not a homeless shelter. There is not going to be a bunch of homeless people hanging out, you know, doing drugs or, you know, drinking and partying. That's not what it's there for. We love them, we take care of them, but we are going to help them as well. But this is, this is for our low to moderate income families, which we have a majority of those in Apopka. And we're going to be an entry point. This building is going to be like an administrative office, there's going to be desks, chairs, computers, phones. When people come in, it's going to be a one-on-one to do a case management, and we have access to this fantastic software. Advent Health has just purchased it, they're going to use it for all of their hospitals and all their outreaches. This software is leading edge, and I used to do telecommunications, so I can actually tell you this is leading edge, where we're going to get on the computer, and after doing the case management, whatever that person needs, be it, you know, we've got the four pillars, what we call the four pillars, you need four pillars to bring somebody out of low income into a higher income. And it's going to be the economic, educational, health and wellness, and character and leadership. And character and leadership includes spiritual. Okay, you need those four legs to bring, to support people and bring them up. You can't just do one, because then the rest of, the rest of them crumble. The way we're looking at this is, we have learned, and when I say we, I mean, we have in the last three years brought in the top professionals in central Florida. Thank you, Mayor, for that. We have had the Homeless Coalition, they have brought in their studies, their 20-year studies, we have brought in Orange Blossom Clinic, we have brought in Advent Health, we have brought in all the leaders of central Florida and Orlando to tell us what is needed for Apopka. So we, we did intense data studies. We had leaders of, of nonprofits step forward and explain what has worked and what has not worked. We have these community, these community leaders, they're going to be coming alongside the ARC to help us get started and help us along, along the way with all of their research and with all of their help as well. So I'm just going to move on. What is the?
Yeah, we need to wrap up, because.
Okay, what is, what is the ARC going to give? It's going to be the community services page, government benefits, employment help, medical, housing, spiritual, education, personal, and transportation. Now, I'm going to make this real quick. The, the key component is, is we already have churches and nonprofits that are providing services. You pointed that out before. But the problem is, we do not have access to this information of what they're providing. What we're going to be is a hub of information with this software, so we want to use all of their resources. And this way, when someone comes in, we can just type in whatever they need, and we have a whole drop-down list of all the churches and nonprofits, and we're going to send the people there, all right? All the churches that are helping us, whatever you're providing, we're going to send the people over to you. people over to you, and we're going to do exchange of services. So this way, churches, instead of one church trying to do 10 different things, one church can just focus on their core asset, the thing that they're best at, and then they can send that person to another church, maybe their core asset is doing food, and the first church is good at counseling. Well, now churches don't have to do everything, they can just focus on their one thing that they're good at, save some money, they don't have to spend all their money trying to address all their parishioners' needs, and they can get all the help for their parishioners by working together. Okay, so there's many things I put in here, we have short-term goals, what we want to do in the first 12 months, we have long-term impact objectives, we have proof of all these organizations that have been doing this before. Okay, and on the last page, we have, okay, there are, the income poverty level is about $25,000. You're precariously housed if you're using 50% or more of your income on housing, well, that's right now, that's $1,500, that's just enough to get an apartment nowadays. So most people in Apopka are precariously housed, okay, that's, we need to be aware of that. So what we're going to want to do is bring up the education level, bring people from $10, $12 an hour jobs to $20, $30 an hour jobs. We have the partners to do it, we have Impact Health with Pastor Keith here, they're going to be doing this wonderful program with four different levels of training, AA programs, it's going to be paid for completely free for the peoples that want to participate in it. Okay, so I like to say the ARC is going to be the lifeboat to our community. And Diane Vasquez, I want to thank you for coming to our church, what you said was very impactful to me. I memorized one thing that you said, when you were explaining, when you were working for the police force for 21 years, you said that you wanted to be an example to young women, and that, I know you must have gone through hell and back being on a police force in New York. So you wanted to, you said, and I won't forget it, you said, "Sometimes we have to show them, we have to lead them to show them the way." And that's what we're trying to do with the ARC, we're trying to lead them by showing them the way, with our community working together as one. So I want to thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. I'll tell you, the proposal that Cheryl put together for us, you know, I'll sit on the board, just so everybody understands, and I think, I don't know how many times she's done a present, or a statement, a proposal, but this thing is very, very, very well done, so I hope you get a chance to, you know, kind of go through it, you know, page by page, and if you have any questions, I think we could, you know, we can have a couple of ARC board members would love to come down, sit down with you individually and kind of go through it as we move forward with this. So Cheryl, you know, congratulations on what an amazing proposal you put together.
Okay, do you have any questions?
Well, I just have this one statement, I mean, I had some reservations about the Resource Center, and some of the pastors didn't know I had some reservations, but I have been speaking to different people, and of course, I had a very deep conversation with you, and I realized that maybe I'm seeing things a little differently from a different perspective, but as I had told your daughter, I want to hear different perspectives, it allows me to see things differently. I have a lot of different life experiences at this stage of my life, and, you know, I've experienced living in the projects, and I understand what it is to kind of always struggle to try and lift, be lifted up from the next level, and when I said that sometimes what you have to do is to lead, to show someone how to get to that point, and what I was, my reservations was creating more programs and just having people just be satisfied with that program. I want, I want people who are struggling to realize that there is a better way for themselves, and it's not always going to be that way for them, because some choose to be homeless, and I mean, I've seen it, I've dealt with mental illness on a very personal level with family members, and I realize it's not easy. So you have a big job ahead of you, and, you know, I am going to take this and read it from back, front to back, and definitely will have a lot of conversations with each of you, because I want it to succeed. I don't want it to just have everyone coming here, or the homeless coming here and saying, "Well, this is good enough for me," I want them to leave and say, "I have hope that I can be out of this situation."
Yep, our, yes, and our favorite saying, "We're giving them a hand up, not a hand out."
And that's, that's what I want, and I thank you, it's been a pleasure, and certainly, you know, things happen for a reason, that I met you and your daughter and was able to have this very serious conversation, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Again, quickly, just caring and transformative with accountability, and I think that you really answered the concerns that have been out there, is this going to attract negative elements and just simply bring things down, though it's going to help lift people up? And I love the fact that it's bringing together everyone's strengths, that we can work together and really help those who want to be helped, and also deal with and address those real needs, and as the kid said earlier, the necessity for mental health, well, that really roots in the spiritual health, and that's going to affect how they think and see themselves and give them vision, so I'm really excited at the potentials of this and all the work, I know it's been a long time, a lot of work gone into it, I think it's going to be a real help for the city of Apopka to address those needs.
Mr. Smith?
I'm excited about the Resource Center, and I think it started off with a bad rap when people were saying it's going to be a homeless center, but the Resource Center is a need and not a want, it's something that we need in our center, in our city, so I'm proud to see this take place. And unless you've been there, you don't understand. Throughout my life, I've had a lot of hands up, and because of that, I have been successful where I am today. So if you've never had a banana sandwich, you don't understand.
With mayonnaise.
If you've never had to stick newspaper in the crack in order to stay warm, you don't understand, so you've done a great job.
Thank you.
Mr. Becker? Yeah, I mean, I struggle with this one, because a lot of people, I've had people approach me the last two weeks and say, "Hey, I heard you're the commissioner that doesn't support this." And I think that's an unfair assessment of where I stand on this topic, I've always, you know, me being the details guy that I am, you know, the success of things like this are in the details, because we've sat up here, and again, it's not the Apopka Resource Center, but we've sunk cost into other initiatives here that have not sustained themselves. You look at the UCF incubator, we sunk over $100,000 into that, and it failed after its first year. So we've got to make, it's not just me being skeptical, it's me being, making sure that the money goes to something that can be sustainable long-term. And so absolutely, I'm glad that you provided this proposal to us, so I can read through it, I absolutely 100% will take you up on the offer for me to meet with your board, just because, you know, in a space like this, it's hard for me to articulate my thoughts very well at a detail level that I like, and I'm comfortable communicating in, and so me, it's much more effective for me to sit with you all, whiteboard stuff out, because that's how my head works, I'm visually inclined, but I would like to have that conversation with you, absolutely. So whenever, wherever, happy to do it.
Well, we're looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we just, you got, we've got a couple more speakers, and if you can...
The people that are really involved in this love the community, love the people. We pray every Friday, every Friday since March, at that building, we walk around it, we send the people, it's not just the food who makes us feel good, we love this community, we want help, they deserve our help, they really do it.
And I hope that's how my comments do not come across, I don't discount that, yeah, 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 okay, sure.
Pastor Shorey's.
I'm David Shorey, and I've been the pastor at First Baptist Church of Apopka for eight years. When I came here eight years ago, Apopka was new to me, I had a ministry director, Bunny Akry, who'd been here most of her life, and so together, we saw a need around the church and began to address it, and through that, we knew that something bigger than what we were doing here needed to take place. So I can tell you, we visited Sanford, East Orlando, Kissimmee, downtown Orlando, Leesburg, Winter Garden, all that have something similar to what we're trying to start here in Apopka Resource Center. We knew that we had the Bridges Center, we knew that we had the Hope Community Center, we knew that there were already some things in Apopka that were happening, but no one was bringing it all together in a concerted effort to really make a difference beyond just feeding them, giving them some clothes, and hoping for the best, hoping they eventually drift off. And so we thought that if all of these agencies, businesses, and church faith communities would all work together, that we could make a difference, in a percentage of them. Not all of them are going to come there, because just like we heard from the Apopka Youth Council today, mental health issue is real, and let's be honest, many of them are in their situation because they didn't have the help that we're trying to get for these that are here right now. And so what we're trying to do is make sure that these don't end up where those are, that our youth of today don't end up out there on our streets, and if we will all work together, we can make a difference in this community like we've never seen before, and that's all we're asking, is that somehow, some way, we would all come together and do that, and I see wonderful things happen in Apopka, because we're going to take this effort.
Thank you, Pastor.
Good evening, everyone, and God bless each and every one of you, and all of you too. So who am I? Who's Marie West? Well, I have worked in the legal field, in the legal arena, as a digital court reporter and events manager for the Orange County Bar Association, and currently, I'm an office manager and a digital court reporter for a small court reporting office in Eltman Springs. And so what am I up to? Well, I'll share with you very briefly. God has called me to address some very serious issues on the different forms of abuse, domestic violence, and human trafficking. It is time to bring the darkness out into the light. So after running from God for a few months, I finally got it, it's time for me to start up this ministry. The Lord has opened up doors at different churches, and I served Him and only Him to talk about the different forms of abuses, domestic violence, on a personal level, because I'm not a victim, I'm a survivor. I should have been dead several times, but God's hand was on my life, He protected me, and now I feel so strong, He's the one that put it on me, because I can't take credit for nothing, that it's time to address the issues to the hurting people, wherever He leads me to do so. I live here in this beautiful city, I am privileged to live here. My church is Remnant Christian Center. Cheryl is like a sister to me, very bright, and I respect her highly. So I have been privileged to work with, and it's not just me who addresses the different forms of abuses and domestic violence, which I planned to do, because Cheryl invited me to be part of the ARC, to handle this specific department. I also have attorneys on board. I have an attorney, a female attorney, who was a former prosecutor at the Seminole County Courthouse, very strong prosecutor against domestic violence, and I thank the good Lord for bringing her in my life. But not only what she addresses, let me be specific, she addresses the laws on sexual abuse and talks about human trafficking. The last seminar that I just, we just finished doing at a church in South Orlando shook me up on that human trafficking. Our children are in serious danger more than you know. It is time to wake up the parents, to let them know and teach them. This ministry is to inform them, it's providing information about what is really going on. There's a lot that is hidden that this last seminar, when Attorney Haba spoke, it woke me up and said, "We cannot sit still." And so God is opening doors. I have another attorney, Attorney John Klein, I also have Attorney James Jalati, they address injunctions, the importance of injunctions, because there are a lot of people that are living in fear and don't know what to do. John Klein, he talks about domestic violence himself, and how it can become a criminal I am currently working, as a matter of fact, in January, I am submitting the paperwork officially, I'm going to mail it out, January 3rd, to the State Department, to move forward with this ministry, and God has brought me not only attorneys, but a marketing person as well, who knows how God connected me with attorneys and judges, God connected Him with well-known people, Shaquille O'Neal, Denzel Washington, the person, the gentleman, Ayala, I think it is, that runs the Better Man Conference.
Okay, thank you, ma'am, I appreciate...
So anyway, I just wanted to share that.
Appreciate that, thank you.
I thank you for your time, I did want to share that this will be a part of the ARC as well, with God's help, and God bless each and every one of you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Well, thank you all for coming out today, I mean, I had it under my mayor's report, but I'll just, let me just wrap it up, and so you guys can get home and rest up. One of the things that we did, a couple commitments I think we made, is one is, as an ARC, we're not going to duplicate services, that's the whole goal, is to, the things that we don't have in our town, let's say like identity, we would try to bring that to Apopka, mental health counseling, which we, none of the groups are doing, we want to do help with that. But the other thing I think that we all kind of agreed on, and all the churches that were involved, is that it's not, it's, we want to, we said we would match dollar for dollar, for whatever city dollars came our way, we would match with either private or church dollars, so that we show that we, as a group, are committed, not only with sweat equity, but with equity. And so I think some of those things, I think, I wanted to bring out, because I think it's important that we're all in it together, we're all in it to, you know, form those relationships, to not duplicate services, and that we are going to put, you know, our money where our mouth is as well. So thank you all for coming out tonight, and we appreciate what ARC is going to do for the city of Apopka, thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Okay, do we want to go back and do the approval of minutes, everybody had a chance to look at those?
Did you make the changes? I did kind of read through it, since I had asked her, I know what she updated, and I saw it, and I'm okay with the changes.
Okay.
And I know Commissioner Becker made some changes, and Susan did make note of that, right? Yeah.
Were we supposed to be reading this?
Well, I mean, when you want to...
I'm okay with the 13th, not the 6th.
Okay, so when do you want to bring that up?
Well, I mean, I just, I was focusing on the presentations, not reading these corrections.
Okay, do you want to just wait till the end of the meeting? Would that be better? What do you want, you want to wait till next meeting?
I would prefer to wait till next meeting.
Okay, okay.
Because I just want to pay attention to it.
All right, that's fine, okay. All right, that's fine, okay. We can do, we'll just, we'll do the approval, well, let's maybe wait for both of them. There's no reason to do the 13th, we don't have the 6th. Okay.
Okay.
All right. Consent agenda, we have 10 items on the consent agenda. Does any of the items need to be pulled? If not, I'll look for a motion to approve the 10 consent agenda items.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Bankson, second by Commissioner Becker, all those in favor?
Aye.
Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Business item, approval of a transportation impact fee credit. Bobby, I guess Pam wasn't feeling well, so she had to go home.
Yeah.
So he is going to read it verbatim, right?
Exactly. Pam wrote some great notes, so this is from her directly. This is a transportation impact fee credit agreement between the city and the developers of the Crossroads 429 project and the Coke property. Under this agreement, the transportation impact fees from the two projects will be combined and put into an escrow account that will be used to pay for the improvements to King Street and Peterson Road, which will be done by the Crossroads 429 developer at the same time they are doing the site work. The improvements include widening the pavement width of both roads and adding two-foot shoulders, making safety improvements to the intersection of King Street and Peterson Road, extending Peterson Road to the west, and constructing right and left turn lanes northbound on King Street and Orange Avenue. The cost estimates included in the agreement are reasonable and should cover the cost of the roadway improvements. However, if there is a shortfall, the agreement allows the city to change the scope or make arrangements to pay the difference from the transportation impact fee reserve account. Section 5 of the agreement addresses the extension of a force main to both sites. The city is not party to this section of the agreement because it is not impact fee credit eligible. However, it will allow the two developers to share the cost of the force main that can be constructed along with the roadway improvements. Benefit to the city is that the road will only need to be torn up once. The recommended motion is to approve the transportation impact fee credit agreement with Arrow Rock III GE Apopka LLC and PMDW Ventures LLC for improvements at King Street and Peterson Road. And both developers are here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, any questions on this business item? Anybody from the public wishes to speak on this matter? If not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve the transportation impact fee credit agreement between the city of Apopka and Arrow Rock III GE Apopka LLC and PMDW Ventures LLC.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2864.
Ordinance number 2864. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the city of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from county rural to mixed use for certain real property generally located west of State Road 429 and Binion Road, and north of Hooper Farms Road, owned by Bert E. Roper and Barbara C. Roper, Family Limited Partnership, comprising 1.53 acres more or less, and providing for severability and an effective date.
No changes, okay. Anybody from the public wishes to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2864.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Bankson?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2865.
Ordinance number 2865. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from County A1 Citrus Rural District to MUESGT Mixed Use East Shore Gateway Subdistrict for certain real property located west of State Road 429 and Binion Road and north of Hooper Farms Road, comprising 1.53 acres more or less, and owned by Bert E. Roper and Barbara C. Roper, Family Limited Partnership, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Okay, any changes, Bobby? No changes, okay. Anybody from the public wishes to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2865.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2876.
Ordinance number 2876. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from RSF 1A Residential Single Family Estate District to RSF 1B Residential Single Family Large Lot District for certain real property located at South Keene Road and west of Marden Road, comprising 8.81 acres more or less, and owned by Nenek Investments LLC, providing for severability and for an effective date.
Any changes, Bobby? Okay.
Change is there, sir. My name is Yvonne Stolar. I am on 2588 Marden Road. It was the worst crime scene in history on Marden Road. Detective came at my gate and said, "What is out here called?" I said, "Crime scene and lover's lane." Then I was told what was going on. For eight weeks, I could not go up to County Line. Detectives, police, everything was there. They want to zone it with Apopka. I am on private property and will remain there. It's a burial ground with all remains that they found there. I am telling the T-R-U-T-H and nothing but the truth. No one is coming in to put in this real Apopka. The audience out of Apopka, they can stare at them, but not Yvonne Stolar. Build doors. It's a nursery with a road with heavy equipment, with people coming in and playing. I don't think so. They will not get it, or build doors needed for his nursery with all those heavy equipment and people coming in. I don't know where they're coming from to live side of a mick. I don't think so. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else wishes to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing and look for a motion. Look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2876.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Becker?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bankson, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2878.
Ordinance number 2878. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the city of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from residential, very low suburban, to agricultural for certain real property located north of Appy Lane and west of Jason Dwellie Parkway, comprising 4.92 acres more or less, and owned by Robert and Mary Singh, providing for severability and for an effective date.
Any changes, Bobby? No changes, okay. Anybody from the public wishes to speak on this matter? If not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2878.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2879.
Ordinance number 2879. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from RSF 1A Residential Single Family Estate District to Ag, Agricultural District, for certain real property located north of Appy Lane and west of Jason Dwellie Parkway, comprising 4.92 acres more or less, and owned by Robert and Mary Singh, providing for severability and for an effective date.
Okay, any changes? No changes, okay. Anybody from the public wishes to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2879.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Bankson, second by Commissioner Velazquez, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
You know, it's a beautiful home they built there. It is, I pass it almost every other day.
Now you can enjoy the four-legged friends.
It's actually very beautiful.
Okay, next up, Resolution 2021-57.
Okay, Resolution 2021-57. A resolution of the city of Apopka to vacate a 15-foot-wide right-of-way located west of Forest Avenue and south of East Third Street in Section 10 Township 21, Range 28 of Orange County, Florida, providing directions to the city clerk for severability for conflicts and an effective date.
Bobby?
Yes, the ARC is seeking to vacate a 15-foot-wide unimproved public right-of-way, which is an alleyway, platted alleyway, but an estimated area of .027 acres located west of Forest Avenue and southeast Third Street. Utility providers have issued letters of no objection. Vacated right-of-way will be transferred to the property owners that are located to the north and south under law. Half will go to the north, half will go to the south. Development Review Committee recommends approval, and the recommended motion is to adopt Resolution 2021-57.
Yeah.
Any questions for Bobby?
Nope.
Okay. Anybody from the public wishes to speak on this matter? Not, we'll look for a motion to approve Resolution 2021-57.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bankson, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
We missed you, Bob.
Resolution 2021-58.
Resolution 2021-58. A resolution of the city council of the city of Apopka, Florida, amending the budget for fiscal year beginning October 1, 2020, and ending September 30, 2021, providing for a budget amendment.
Good evening, Gladimir Ortega, Finance Director, City of Apopka. Resolution number 2021-58 is regarding the Water Company of America that was a water piggyback contract as a consultant for utility revenue enhancements. Their scope of services included the analysis of the water, wastewater, and reclaimed water system to correct any system under billings and misbillings. The city council approval for the piggyback contract was April 15, 2020, but the work began in fiscal year 2021. The first billing cycle was received at the end of fiscal year 2021 from Water Company of America. This amendment is to provide payment for the total cost of their contracted services during fiscal year 2021 for $105,448.38. And the request is for council adoption of Resolution 2021-58.
Can you give me that amount again?
If y'all remember, this is, gosh, it's been, yeah, like a year and a half, and almost two years. So I had a bet with one of our engineers down at Public Works, because he didn't think we would secure this much revenue from these under or uncollected water bills. And so I think we're over $500,000 now that we're going to collect per year, either underreported or not reported. So it's really been a great addition to, you know, propping up our utilities. Okay, anybody from the public wishes to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing and look for a motion to approve Resolution 2021-60.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Becker?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay, city council reports.
I think there's still one more.
She has one more.
Oh, one more, yes, I'm sorry, my sight. Resolution 2021-60.
A resolution, 2021-60. Resolution of the city council of the city of Apopka, Florida, amending the budget for fiscal year beginning October 1, 2021, and ending September 30, 2022, providing a budget amendment.
Resolution 2021-60 for fiscal year 22, October 1, 2021, ending in September 30, 2022. The first amendment is for the community development block around the CDBG for $800,000. The city of Apopka was awarded $750,000 from CDBG Housing Assistant. The city match requirement is $50,000, and the approval of the grant man agreement was provided during the October 6 city council meeting. This amendment provides funding to the appropriated account lines to be expensed and subsequently reimbursed by the CDBG grant. The second amendment is related to to the recreation assigned capital projects, and in fiscal year 2021, a budget amendment was authorized during the city council meeting held on July 21, 2021, to assign some of the Duke Energy Public Service Tax Revenue Funds to three capital projects within the Recreation Department. The projects were for the amphitheater bathroom concession, the Frank Carlton storage building, and the Birding Park improvements totaling $950,000. This amendment assigns any remaining fiscal year 2021 balances to complete these three projects for $724,704.92.
I'm sorry, you told me the amphitheater bathrooms?
The amphitheater bathroom slash concessions.
Concession.
The Frank Carlton storage building.
And what was the third one?
The Birding Park improvements. The next one is for the ambulance mounts, and this is the fire department budgeting fiscal year 2021 funds for ambulance mounting system to secure life packs. And due to the delivery not being received until October, we have to move the expenses to be included in fiscal year 2022. So this amendment assigns the funds for the expenditure in the appropriate fiscal year, and that was $23,886. A lot of these expenses happen at year end, and if we don't receive them during the correct fiscal year, we have to move them. The fourth amendment is the Recreation Contractual Agreement, and this is the Recreation Department currently has agreements with the BFW to facilitate the rentals of the Apopka Community Center for the Sumba Services. Both contracts collect revenue, and the city shares a percentage with each vendor. And the amendment assigns an expense account line for the vendor accordingly to their agreement. The payments were previously being recorded on a revenue account, which was incorrect, so this is to correct that and put budget on the correct line for $30,000.
How much was that for?
$30,000.
It's on 236 of our packet.
The next one is for the Mainland Village Special Assessments, and this is, the Mainland Village subdivision requires a fence for the stormwater pond, and it's a cost of $14,795. And then the last one is the water company that we just discussed for 2021, their water piggyback contract, and the city council already approved the piggyback on April 15. And this is for the cycle of the new year to record budget for the contract for fiscal year 2022 of $231,000 to $17.84. And the request is to adopt a resolution number 2021-60, if you have any questions, I can assist.
Any questions for Gladimir? Anybody from the public wishes to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve Resolution 2021-60.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Bankson?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, city council reports. Commissioner Velazquez.
Oh, God. Other than, you know, I have to say, well, of course, we, you know, we do attend the Saturday Sounds, we support it. You're out there with Debbie every weekend, and so is your mom, and I'm out there with Ed, and no matter the mosquitoes, the weather, we sit out there and we support the week Saturday Sounds. So I appreciate that, you know, it's a way of continuing to promote the Saturday Sounds. And of course, yesterday was, you know, very exciting for me to kind of go into a home that's 100 years old in Arrow Estate and meet the family that took it over, the David and Lisa Newark. And that was an interesting tour of the home, and certainly very interesting to learn the history of it. So, you know, that was my week, besides all the other things that I do on the side.
Yeah, same thing there. I really appreciate the historical society and the value that that brings, that we, you know, they're bringing that, all the information that they brought was really exciting, and it kind of just gives it that bigger understanding of the roots of who we are as a city, which stabilizes us as we move forward. So I really appreciated what they did there.
Commissioner Smith?
Well, I have, I think, 13 more days for this No Shade November, to donate those funds to cancer society, so I'm looking forward to that. In addition, what I just want to say was outstanding event with the Johnny Land Gala, excellent event, and then outstanding presentation on the state of the city. So just want to commend you on a job well done.
Thank you. Commissioner Becker?
Nothing to add. I just wanted to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. I don't think we'll meet again before that. So the staff...
I don't think we'll meet again before that, so the staff, your teams, the rest of the council, and the residents of Apopka, I hope everybody has a safe and enjoyable. We have so much to be thankful for, and it just seems like there's a lot of people that are sick and down right now, and just for us to be able to be upright at times, that's, that's thanks enough, so, uh, I just wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Same.
Okay, all right. Edward? Nothing. Michael?
I have just one item. It's just a brief update. Last week, we completed the closing of the remain, of the other, of additional three parcels at the city center project. These are the parcels that are located to the north of 441. Closing was completed late last week.
Great, thank you.
So is that, is that, is that all of the parcels now at this point?
No, there's still, um, by account, we have four remaining parcels that have not been sold to tourists yet.
So what you just described is the ones north of 441?
Yes, on the north side. Actually, it's the only parcels of the city center project that were north of 441.
Thank you, Jim. All right. All right, mayor's report. Coronavirus state and local recovery funds. I know, Edward, we're going to be in the next, probably not, maybe next or for sure by the, the second meeting in December, we'll be coming back with a firm idea on where we can spend those dollars, so I just want, you know, we're, we're, you know, it's, it's just been a kind of struggle. We continue to, I continue to question the federal government why we got, we got 7 million in Ocoee, we got 24, but haven't gotten a good answer, but, you know, we will, we'll, we'll continue to fight that fight. But just so you do know that we, we are in the budget, so this is the fiscal 2122 budget, the federal budget. We've got, uh, the, the water, water tanks are in the budget, so it's a, it's a, it's a million-dollar budget item that's, it's in there, uh, it's, so it's just waiting for approval from, from Congress. Okay, a couple other things. We've got a virtual public meeting for the Kelly Park Road Study. It's going to be Thursday, November 18th, so just a couple, tomorrow, uh, from 6:00 to 7:00 PM. It's to evaluate the improvements, road improvements from Round Lake Road all the way up to, um, up to Rock Springs Road. So if you're interested in that, that corridor, it should be interesting. We also, on November 19th, so Friday, we've got at Fire Station 1, 10:00 AM, we're going to honor our, our firefighters that saved that, the child, you know, was out in the Rock Springs Mobile Home Park, so, uh, that, that should be a, a great event. We're, we're not only celebrating our firefighters, but also the, the folks that, that were there on the scene, the, the residents who, that also helped as well, so that's really good. Had the honor to, to get invited to, it was a, a joint venture between Career Source and OCPS about, uh, training programs, train, you know, technical training programs, and they've gone to the private sector now. This last one I had, was on Monday, I had, it was for the public side of, of employer, so it was nice to talk with other cities and counties about maybe internal programs, and I know that the Fire Department now is working on a program with, with Valencia to have a program here so they can get their certifications right here at Apopka, so there's a lot of programming we want to look at, you know, Public Works, maybe we partner with Ocoee or Winter Garden or some of these other cities to, you know, the, the, for, for instance, probably one of our biggest, uh, shortage right now, dispatch and, and police and some of the other real high demand jobs that we could maybe come up with some, some, some programming to get the, the certificate that they would need to be able to, to get, get that, that good, good paying job, so, you know, we'll continue to monitor that, and if we can help OCPS, you know, with, with, and Career Source put that program together here in Apopka, we'd love to, we'd love to be able to do it. The Employee Thanksgiving Food Drive to Benefit Loas and Fishes will end on Friday. To, to date, we've collected 462 items, um, thank, thanks to all the employees that have, have, have donated to the cause. It's, uh, it's, you know, Loas and Fishes is our, you know, our food bank, you know, for all of Apopka, and we're, we're excited to kind of help them where we can. Kind of neat, Fenfrock on Saturday was rented the entire Camp Weewaw, and we had between, I hear, 700 and 800 people out there, and, uh, they enjoy themselves, you know, immensely, so, um, starting to get some traction there, and I think you'll, you'll start to see a lot more, uh, activities going on there. And on, on that note, on December the 7th, um, from 4:00 to 7:00 PM, it's a Tuesday night, we're going to do a smores event. So this is going to be our open house for Camp Weewaw, so smores, Christmas crafts, and tours for the community, so, you know, bring your kid out, you know, if, if, if you're, you know, stay-at-home mom, want to bring him out at 4 o'clock right after school or up until 7 o'clock, it should be a great event, um, come out and see Camp Weewaw. We'll have some of the campsites open, um, and on that note, we, just today, we had Forest Lake Academy brought out about 20 students to help, help us with some cleanup there, and last week, two weeks ago, we had Journey Christian Church brought some, some youth out there to help us, so we're getting a lot of, it's kind of neat that we're getting a lot of these, these groups that are coming out to help us with Camp Weewaw, you know, so we, we just, now we just got to keep finding projects for them to, to, to take on, and, and so, but it's neat that, that they're, they're engaged with that. Sheila Oaks update, we installed another baffle box yesterday. The, the rest of the baff, baffle boxes have come in, so it's just a question when we get those installed. Amphitheater bathroom update, there are three walls up and four more to go, I guess, so, knock on wood, it should be done by, hopefully by end of next week, but, um, that's, that's the plan, and so that will really make, you know, hopefully for the Pops concert, having bathrooms, um, right there next to the amphitheater, that will be ADA, you know, compliant will be really nice, and so we're really excited about that. And last but not least is, wow, this is crazy, we, um, found about a, a, an opportunity for a grant, a federal grant, well, state grant, um, for some federal dollars that came down, um, for, uh, some, some water projects, and so I, I gave it to my team at Vlad and, and Narette and Nicole, and they were, um, I said, listen, we've only got three days to put together this grant proposal, and they said, we can't do it, we can't do it, mayor, it can't be done. I go, listen, do the best you can in three days, it's got to be there about, you know, 12 o'clock that, you know, that afternoon. I said, all they can do is tell us no. I said, just do it. So we came back, and you won't believe this, we got $250,000 matching grant to do all the septic to sewer for Camp Weewaw, so half of all the septic to sewer will be paid for, and this is even bigger, not from a, not from a city perspective, but from an environmental perspective, you know, we have to meet BMAPs, which are Basin Management Action Plans. We have to start to reduce our nitrogen and phosphorus going into the groundwater, and so there are different ways to do it, like when we, if y'all will help us fund the, you know, the onsite program out at Wee Gavaglin, that goes toward reducing our, our nitrogen, which helps us with our BMAP. Well, this one, we have four trailer parks that are within our, our utility service area, but that are not in the city, but there are four trailer parks, and we just got a grant from DEP for $5 million to help us to convert those over from, from their packaged plants, which are very wasteful, I mean, not, not good for the environment at all, to, to, to hook them up to our, our sewer plant, so congratulations to the team that put that, that, you know, that grant together in about three days, and so, um, what a great, great way to end, uh, this, this meeting, and, and like Commissioner Becker said, let's all have a great Thanksgiving.